Good evening, everybody. Welcome to City Council. We'll start with our invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. And tonight, our invocation is given by Reverend Sandy Johnson from the United Methodist Church. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Thank you for having me. I just wanted to say I really appreciate you beginning all of your meetings in prayer. Hopefully, it'll make everything run a little smoother. At least, that's the plan. What do you pray? Oh gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful town in which we live. Lord God, we thank you for those who have stepped up into leadership and who lead us so well. Lord God, I ask that you would bless this meeting tonight, put a blessing on our agenda. Lord God, may our conversations and discussions be fruitful. And, Lord God, may the decisions be those that would bring honor and glory to you and be the very best for our community. And I lift this prayer in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the liberty of justice for all.
Thank you, Sandy. We do appreciate you doing those for us. And they, I do think they help it go smoother. You can't always tell, but they're really good. Thank you. So first off, tonight, we have our public announcements. But I don't see, is Leslie here yet? All right, we'll skip that for the moment. And we'll move to our initial public comment period. Before we do that, I also want to acknowledge, before I forget, that we have Councilman Warren Harhey joining us on the phone. He had a little accident, and we're just glad he's here with us. So welcome, Councilman Harhey.
Thank you, Mr. Herr.
All right, we have our initial public comment period. It's devoted to agenda items only. Is there anyone wishing to speak on an agenda item tonight? All right. Seeing none, we'll close our initial public comment period, and we'll move to approval of the regular agenda. Madam City Clerk.
Mayor, staff is requesting that item number five be moved to proceed. Item number four, please. And no other changes.
Okay. Mr. City Manager.
No further changes.
And Mr. City Attorney.
No changes.
Come to council for approval.
Aye.
Move for approval with changes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Next is our approval of the consent agenda. Madam City Clerk.
No changes.
Mr. City Manager.
No changes.
And Mr. City Attorney.
No changes.
Counsel.
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion also carries unanimously. So it looks like we have our public announcement now. Leslie Woodbury, right on time, from the Boulder City Museum and Historical Association.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. I am just reporting to the city, which is one of our partners at the museum, the archives, this, from the time period of January to March, we've had 20 research requests and four items donated. And in that same period of time, we've hosted about 252 school-aged children on field trips, including Thorpe Elementary, Twitchell Elementary, Mother Goose Preschool, and a Boy Scout troop. We have been hosting tour organizations seven days a week, and those tour organizations include Pink Jeep Tours, Sweet Tours, JV7, Big Horn Tours, Comedy on Deck, Adventure Tours, and B.C. Tour Bus. We are getting about one to three tours a day, seven days a week. So that's awesome. We have partnered with Boulder Dam Credit Union to bring back our Third Thursday program. And last month, we had standing room only for Dr. Kay Moore. She talked about women in Nevada, in Nevada history. And we have the following for the rest of the year on Third Thursdays for people who are interested: Dr. Andrew Dunar, Dr. Michael Green, Mrs. Clay T. White, Dr. Kirill Zizziak, and Mrs. Karen Wilks. And the theme for the year is Undertold Stories of Southern Nevada. We've had 16,354 visitors from January to March visit our permanent exhibit. We have the L.A. Department of Water and Power sponsoring our Welcome to Hard Times part of our exhibit. Railroad Pass Casino and Travel Center is sponsoring our Welcome to Rag Town exhibit. S.D.G.E. is sponsoring our Welcome to the Taming the Red Bull. And White Town Custom Construction is sponsoring our Lives on the Line exhibit. We have volunteers working in our archives, our educational outreach, our event assistance, and our permanent exhibit. And we have, we've changed, one change that we've made this past year is that we are a free museum now. We no longer charge an entrance fee. And we now are open from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And that, one thing that we've seen is that we are, the proceeds that we're getting from our donation box and our gifts, our museum gift shop sales have exceeded what we used to get for entrance fees. So that's good news. That's what we thought would happen, and that's why we did it. It's also a real bonus. It's allowed 50% more visitors to go through the museum, where we used to have people come down the hall of the hotel and stop and see that there was a $2 fee, and they'd turn around. Those people are going through the museum, which is what we wanted to happen. And then, one more thing. Travel Nevada came and spent some time at the hotel and museum, and they did a two-minute video, which you can see online at Nevada History: Boulder City Hoover Dam Museum. There's a great two-minute video produced about the museum, and that is done by the state preservation, Nevada State Preservation Office. Thank you. Thank you for your partnership.
Thank you. I'm a cheapskate when I travel, too. I won't pay that $2 entrance fee. No, I would. Okay. We, oh, we have several great visitors tonight with us. We have at least one fourth grader. Can you stand so we can recognize you? Any fourth graders? All right. Thank you. You don't need to be embarrassed. That's awesome. I like your Pac-Man shirt, too. And then, so I had the privilege the other day of being at the high school with many of the high school seniors that are out there today in our audience, and they've joined us. They're gearing up for the youth or the mock city council that they do every year. And so we had some good discussions. They had all sorts of good questions and great ideas, and I know they're just aching to speak tonight. So we'll give them that opportunity if they want to. But can you all stand up so we can recognize you? So they get to kind of see how we do things here, because they get to do it in a few weeks, and they'll be practicing and gearing up for their roles and learning about different issues that they've picked. Okay, we are on to our regular agenda, I believe. And its first is item number three, Resolution Number 6917, Establishing a Utility Advisory Committee. We have Dennis Porter, our Utilities Director, to introduce this.
Thank you. Mayor, council. The last meeting this last January, we provided City Council with a presentation proposing two options for the creation of a Utility Advisory Committee. At that time, City Council provided feedback to staff, and the resolution in front of you today is proposed, kind of a proposed hybrid of the two options. The resolution as written provides the following, provides the purpose of the Utility Advisory Committee, as we presented last time. It provides the membership and the terms of the committee, and then, of course, the duties of the Utility Advisory Committee. So short, in short, one of the outstanding items that needs to be determined is the preference of a five-member versus seven-member committee. And with that summary, I'll take questions.
All right. Any questions or comments, council members? Mr. McManus.
Thank you. I know we've gone over this. This has been in the works for some time now. One of the questions that I had had yesterday that I'll propose an amendment to the language we have was in Section 3, Under the Duties. Special meetings may be held on the call of the chairman, three committee members, or may be requested by the city manager. I would like to add to that by a majority of City Council as well. And I guess we have a decision to make regarding the number of members, either five or seven. I would ask that we go with seven. We may not be able to fill all of those numbers initially, but I think that having that ability to get as many qualified people as possible to serve on an important committee like this, having the count of seven would probably be wise. Thank you.
Thank you. Others?
I'd like to agree with Councilman McManus on the number seven. Because of the wide scope of our utilities services, I think seven is an appropriate number.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Schuman.
Can we just get a feel, City Manager, or City Clerk, how many we have on our other committees like this? Because it is often hard to fill these seats as time goes on.
I brought the list. I had a feeling that was going to be asked. For airport, it's five, but I would like to remind the council that at one time it was seven, and it was reduced. Because on committees or commissions where the knowledge is so specific, it is hard to find people who qualify that would benefit the committee. So for airport, it's five. Allotment, which is drawn by lot, is seven. Audit review is three. Planning Commission and Parks and Rec Commission, but those are commissions versus committee, those are seven. Civil Service, three. Board of Appeals, three. Historic Preservation Committee, five.
Okay, so for this committee, there are some requirements, right?
Correct. There's our requirements for, they're preferential, they're not mandatory, for some technical expertise in the utility business or in the financial business.
And do you technically fill one of those seven seats or five seats?
Non-voting, so I'll be the sixth, I'll be a staff member that's just an ex officio.
Okay, so we need either five or seven.
Five or seven.
Not including you.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so the requirements are not absolutely mandated.
They're not mandated because of that concern of whether we could get five or seven that met all those requirements.
Okay. And if we set it up as seven, and we only have five, what do we do in that situation? Or if we don't have enough volunteers?
If you set it up as seven and you only can fill five, that's going to be a problem with quorum, you know, having a quorum attend and also, and I don't think it would affect the vote, because there would, there would be nothing to, you know, it's just a recommendation. It's not final. So it would, the only problem I see is establishing a quorum if there were people absent.
So that's my concern, is filling these different committees over the years is having enough volunteers to fill. We've certainly had our problems with that, you know? So I lean a little bit more towards five, if I had to, if I had to pick.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, I'm a little hoarse tonight. I think I lean toward five as well, just for the reasons that Councilman Schuman mentioned. I don't know what would be involved in trying to go back and redo this if we started with seven and then we had a hard time filling those. But I know for many of the committees, we have a hard time getting volunteers to serve on our other committees. So I don't know. I think maybe we should hear from the public comment with respect to this, because I don't know how much interest there is in serving. I think in the ad hoc committee, or whatever you want to call it, that Councilman Harhey and I think McManus were involved in, there were several people attending those meetings. I don't know how many. But just on the face of it, I think five is advisable. But I honestly don't know how much interest there is with respect to people who want to serve on this committee.
All right, thank you. So unless there's anything else, we'll...
Yeah, I'd just like to respond to that, that, you know, there are a number of people that have indicated an interest in serving on this committee. I think it's a wide-ranging committee. There are subjects to be looked at that are of a very technical nature, others of very financial nature. Those are not necessarily the same person. Matter of fact, I think it's probably rare that you would find that. To change this, I believe all that would be necessary would be a resolution at some point in the future. It's not a big change. I think it's something that could be corrected by council within probably a 30-day period of time, if we find that's to be a problem. But I would rather start out making this open to the community. We need to remember that the primary industry of Boulder City has been energy generation since it started here. We have a lot of folks in this community that have been involved in the utility business, managing dams, managing contracts for power, managing water contracts. I think we have a large pool of people that we can look to. If we find it's a problem, we can always adjust that. Thank you.
I tend to agree with that, especially to start out. I think you're going to see some, a lot of interest to start. We'll see how it goes over time. I don't see a problem changing it if we need to. So I will open this up to public comment if there be any. Judy.
I have been attending most of the ad hoc meetings, and I agree with Mr. McManus and Mr. Harhey. I think seven would be good. For one thing, you've got wastewater, you've got regular water, you've got electric, we've got sewer, and we have garbage. So you've got a lot of different things, and some of us have worked on various things, and I saw, and I think we would have, not have a problem getting seven people to volunteer for this, at least to get us started and getting off the starting gate so we can be accomplished what we need to accomplish and advise the council as to where we feel some adjustments they can maybe make. So I'll go along with the seven. I think it would be preferable. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Glenn.
Good evening, Mayor. My name's Glenn Fang. Good evening, Mayor, council. I agree with the seven. I think that's a good place to start. Like you just said, there's, you know, a wide range of things to be looked at, and, you know, and we don't, probably don't have too many people that are, you know, experts on water and electric and finance all rolled into one person. I think it's a good idea to start seven, like Paul said, that if it becomes problematic to keep it, you know, seven people, it's not that difficult for the council to bring it back down to five. Just my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? James.
I'm just here to also echo that I think seven is a very appropriate number. When I've been going around and talking to people, there's a lot of people with a wealth of knowledge on these matters, so I think there shouldn't be a problem filling those seven seats. I'd also like, in reviewing the packet, it wasn't really clear on how often this committee was going to be getting together. I saw that it was to annually review capital improvements, so I'm hoping, obviously, that this is a very important committee. I'm hoping that it's meeting much more than once or twice a year. So if you guys could talk a little bit about that, that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. High school students, alls you have to do is stand up here and say seven, five, maybe six, I don't know. Last chance. It's the easiest speech you'll ever make. All right, we'll close the public comment and come back to council for action. So, go ahead, Mr. Harhey.
Yeah, in terms of the discussion regarding the difficulty of filling some of the other committees, the difference is, is that the utilities touch everybody, and that lives in the city, that votes in the city. The Airport Commission, at this time, I don't own an airplane. I don't have plans to own an airplane, so I have a little skill in that area. And I think that would be the case for many of the people in Boulder City, that they have an interest in the utilities that they would not have in these other committees. And in hosting these ad hoc committee meetings, I don't believe there was ever a meeting where we didn't have at least a dozen or more people show interest and appear and make comments. So again, I'd like to restate that seven, I think, is the appropriate number.
Okay, so with respect to Mr. McManus's suggestion on majority of council being able to call a special meeting, is there's no legal problem with that, is there?
I could make that change.
Okay. And anybody have an issue with that?
No, I would just like to respond to the public comment regarding the frequency of meetings. There is a statement in here, "The advisory committee shall hold regular meetings, but not less regularly than every three months." I understand, and no offense to Mr. Morris, but when lawyers word things, sometimes it's not easy to catch. But it does call for quarterly meetings. And again, with that amendment, the chair of the committee, a majority of the committee, or excuse me, three members of the committee, the city manager or majority of council can request more frequent meetings if necessary. Mike, and I believe that is a good number. If we require them to meet more than quarterly, I think there will be a lot of work for them to do upfront, but perhaps after the first couple of years, they may find that, once we have our rate structures in place, our energy contract with Hoover Dam is a 50-year contract. So once they get up to speed on this, I don't know that there would be an awful lot for them to do, and they may find that the quarterly meetings are sufficient. But it does provide for them to meet more often if necessary.
Any further comments or discussion? If not, then I'll go ahead and make the motion to have a seven-member committee with majority of council being able to call special meetings, and with those changes, to approve Resolution Number 6917.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make one more comment. It was mentioned earlier about an informal group of citizens that have met over, I believe, more than a year's period of time now, working towards this. The late Tom Clements had been chairing that committee, but there were a number of others, and I know some of them are shy, so I'm just going to use first names. Bryn was the person who, several years ago, had actually suggested that a committee like this come about. Greg, Larry, Marty, Linda, Judy, Linda, George, Joseph, and Neil. Again, I really appreciate the work that those citizens put into making this a reality. It's something that's necessary, and I'd certainly encourage all those people that have been doing this informally to also volunteer and serve officially on this committee. Thank you.
I'd like to add one name, Tom Clements. He did a lot of work at the front end of this ad hoc committee.
Thank you. And all of you shy people, I see a few of you out there, so thank you. You know who you are. Congratulations, everybody. That's a big step for our city, and thank you. And congratulations to Mr. Harhey as well. I know this was a big issue for him. His initial, what do we call them, town hall meetings, he did on that, and so he's been a big advocate of that for a while. In fact, I think we have some, something there.
Yeah, it's my baby, all right.
So the council member wanted to ensure that, because it is his baby, he wasn't sure if it was a boy or a girl, but there are here boy and girl cigars. They're actually, so if you'd like to partake, you can come up to the podium and grab one.
Those are courtesy of Councilman Harhey. And they are candy, so you can have them. All right, we are on to item number five, Canvas of the Returns and Certification of the Abstract for the April 2 Municipal Primary Election. And so I just read this, right? Or do you have an intro?
Well, I just, I'll just do a brief overview. As everybody knows, the primary election was held last Tuesday, April 2. The purpose of a primary in Boulder City is simply to reduce the number of candidates moving forward to the general election. In the packet, the unofficial results were attached. So for the mayor's race, we had three candidates. The two moving forward are Mayor Rod Woodbury and Councilmember Kiernan McManus. And for the council member seats, there are two seats available. There were eight candidates, and the top four moving forward are James Adams, Claudia Bridges, Peggy Levitt, and Rich Schuman. So in addition to those offices, the four ballot questions will appear on the general election the second Tuesday in June. So now that the primary election is over, NRS 293C .387 requires the City Council to canvass the returns and approve the official abstract of votes, which I received yesterday and was forwarded to you via email. There's also a copy on the table. And so you, the council, particularly the mayor, needs to note any clerical errors. And then, after that, direct the city clerk to certify the abstract and forward to the Secretary of State, please.
All right, so there were no errors in the 3,517 ballots cast in the 11 precincts located in Boulder City. How'd I do?
Perfect.
All right. So now we need a motion to direct you to do...
To canvass the returns, approve the abstract, and transmit the results to the Secretary of State, please.
So moved. Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And also, before we move on, congratulations to those that are moving on, and thank you to those who participated and put their names in the hat to run for election. I don't care who you are or what you stand for, that's not an easy thing to do. It's a lot of hard work, and Boulder City, even though you might look at 33, 34% turnout and say, "Well, that's only a third of our voters," but compared to what you see in the valley, it's four times as much, usually, sometimes more than that. You know, when you're seeing 8% in turnouts and 12% turnouts, that's crazy. So it's great that we have such high participation in Boulder City, and including those that are willing to stand up and speak for what they believe in. And also... also, I encourage you going forward to keep participating. We needed an even bigger turnout in the general election. So, thank you. All right, we are on to item number four now, right? Do we, so this is a closed session. Do we want to move up public comments and all of that? Okay. So are we gonna, we're eventually going to go into item number four, closed session for firefighters, labor negotiations, and I think we come out of that having to actually take action tonight, correct? So you can stick around for that if you want, but I'm going to move up public comments and city council reports ahead of that, and for those who want to listen to that and then be able to leave and not stick around for the closed session. High, high school students, you picked a good night to be here. It's a really short meeting. Okay, so we'll do our final public comment period. You can speak on anything in final public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak? Judy.
Judy DeShane. I'm, I'm about 12 hours early because the budget meeting isn't till in the morning, but I went over the addendum that came out, and I really have some large concerns about the number of new managers that are being hired, and of course, the rate of pay and the benefits. It comes to a lot of money, and that's only going to go up. And we're a very small community. I have a problem with why, it seemed like almost every department had a manager under the department head, or an assistant manager. It just seems like it's kind of overkill. We have, have a lot of, we're very top-heavy, is how it looked to me. So I just wanted to put that bee in your bonnet, and you can come up with an answer in the morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Yes, James.
James Adams. I guess I'll use any opportunity to talk about how much I dislike palm trees. If you were driving around or walking around town, you saw the husks of palm trees all over with the wind. For me, it's just one more notch and why we really shouldn't be using palm trees. They're not native to the area. I think we should be focusing more on, on native plants, well-acclimated plants here in the desert as we move forward with, with our landscaping projects. It's better for water use, it's better for maintenance. Yeah, so no more palm trees. Thank you.
All right, high school students, you set you up. Another softball you threw. You guys can jump on that bandwagon. Palm trees, no palm trees. Any others wishing to speak? Okay, we'll close the public comment, move on to city council reports. Do we have any city council reports tonight?
I just wanted to mention, I will be going up to the PoolPact Annual Conference next week. PoolPact is the organization that provides insurance coverage, human resource information, a lot of direction and assistance for our city. It is the annual board meeting. If there's anything anyone wants me to take or bring up at that, please let me know. It's a two-day, or meetings over a two-day period of time up there in Reno. And during my announcement or recognition of the people who had worked on the advisory committee, I forgot one person, Eileen, did a great job taking notes for that and keeping everybody on board with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Levin.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know all of those people, but I want to congratulate Councilman Harhey and McManus, who've been involved in this, and all of the people who've been involved in getting this utility committee going, advisory committee. I think it's been a labor of love for many people who are interested in it, and it's, I, I think it's really a big step in our city to see this come to fruition tonight. So I just want to comment on that. I wanted to thank those members of our city staff and the Chamber of Commerce, and there were many different sponsors for the Big Clean, which was, was it last Saturday or the Saturday before? I've lost track. Anyway.
Yeah, March, March 30.
Okay, so it, it was a great event. Again, I got there kind of toward the tail end, and they had already filled up the shredding trailer before I got there, but they were, they had all kinds of donated items. Anyway, very successful event. I, my only recommendation is I wish you could do it two times a year instead of once a year, but I know how much work it is for all of those involved. But thank you, Michael, for being there, and I know we had other city staff involved as well. I also wanted to announce, the second annual Boulder City showcase is this Friday. Last year, we had the first one. I, this kind of came about because I'm Boulder City's representative on the LVCBA, and I, Boulder City's kind of a real little frog in this big pond of players, you know, who represent big municipalities and big hotels. And so I, I wanted some way to show off Boulder City, and this showcase kind of came about as a result of that. So I partnered with Meg McDaniel from the LVCBA and Jill Legan from the Chamber, and we had our first showcase exactly a year ago, in April, and we focused on the unique history of Boulder City and the various aspects of our history that would attract tourists and visitors to Boulder City, and also adventure tourism. As a result of that showcase, we're having a heritage home tour, which is a home tour of historic homes in Boulder City in a couple of weeks, which is really a big deal. We are hoping to have 100 visitors from Boulder City come out and spend the day in Boulder City, tour these homes, and have lunch. We also have the Boulder City Express now, as Leslie mentioned earlier, is bringing all kinds of visitors to Boulder City. So we're hoping this is even a bigger and better event and attracts more attention to Boulder City, so I'm really excited for that. Also, we had a very lengthy meeting this morning at LVCBA because all these annual reports are coming in, and I'm summarizing probably a 30-minute presentation in about 30 seconds. But in 2018, I've mentioned this before, the visitors in Boulder City was down slightly, and that's attributed to one October event, but the revenue was actually up a little bit. So what was presented is that even though we had slightly fewer visitors, our visitors spent more money. So the tourism in southern Nevada, mainly in Clark County and Las Vegas, accounts for 11, or accounts for $36 billion, and that equates into $11 billion of wages and salary. That's a direct benefit to people living and working in Las Vegas and Clark County. But the total economic impact, as I said, is 36 billion. So it's, accounts for a third of the gross domestic product in Nevada. That's pretty amazing to think about that. And also, tonight is the opening. I hope the wind died down a little bit for the Las Vegas ballpark and the first night for the Las Vegas Aviators. If I hadn't been at city council, I would have been at the ballgame. So anyway, that's, that's a big step for Las Vegas. I don't know if any of you have seen the news coverage on that, but it is an amazing stadium for people who know about baseball. So that's my report.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention a few things. One, thank you to staff for getting out there and working overtime, as usual. One that comes to mind most recently was at a recent chamber mixer where Roger Hall and several other people from our city staff were out talking about the swimming pool after hours. We appreciate that. City Clerk's office, working overtime on the election recently. Lots of hard work, and we, we definitely appreciate that. And then, again, I just want to say how much I appreciate the students from Boulder City High School for being here. I really had fun the other day, and I hope you have fun going forward with your projects. I know you just want me to shut up so you can go home, but, but they're, they'll be back here. I think they're, we're shooting for around May 15th to do the actual mock city council. So council and staff, come to that if you can and support them. They'll be great at it. All right. So we will, our final item then is item number four, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to go into special closed session on our firefighters collective bargaining.
So moved.
Okay, hang on, hang on.
Excuse me, Mayor. For the record, my name's Kevin Nicholson, the city's fire chief, and I think we'd like to take a little something out of order before we move into closed session.
Sure.
City manager discussed, possibly conducting, you know, discussing the fiscal impact associated with the agreement. So if we could, we'll just move forward with that real quick, and then we can move into the closed session. Before we get started, I want to recognize that the city's labor attorney, Mark Rishardi, is with us this evening. Here in a minute, we'll be discussing the details associated with the labor negotiations. But before we get started, we need to conduct a public hearing associated with the fiscal impact of the collective bargaining agreement. And so with that, I'll go ahead and bring Mark up here with me. But briefly, we did our calculations over the entire period. I think before we discussed some of the retro pay and different things, but over the entire duration of this agreement, the fiscal impact is going to be approximately $247,000 for the term of this agreement. And so with that, I think we need to conduct a public hearing, and so I'll go ahead and turn this over to you so that we can invite the public up to discuss the fiscal impact associated with this agreement.
And Chief, what's the term of that agreement?
It is five, five years.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so this is a public hearing item. Anyone wishing to speak in the public hearing? All right, we'll close the public hearing, and do we need to pass anything in connection with that?
No, not a closed session.
Okay. All right, now I will entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. For those of you that want to stick around, you're certainly welcome to. We'll come back at a closed session later. For those of you who aren't going to stick around, thank you for coming. We'll see you next time. All right, so we've come out of closed session on...
One second, I just have to start that and cover.
Okay, we've come out of closed session on item number four. We're back in open session, and we are at item number 4E, Resolution 6915, approving agreement number 19-1815 between the city and the Boulder City Professional Firefighters Association. And I will move to approve that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
Congratulations. All right, if there's nothing else, meeting adjourned. Thank you.
We're done, Lauren.
Great. Well, I can testify that the city council meeting...